Morning.
Morning.
Great, alright, sounds good, thank you very much.
She was just got the 15th down?
That's just the credit course.
Uh, I, I don't know.
Which is not nice though.
How's Erica? Morning.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Just fine, everybody's in their places, all very trained.
Well, in your place.
So, did you put this on your board?
Yeah.
See, it was a lot.
I thought it was wonky, but mine got soft.
I know, I can see that.
Can you get my address?
She's coming today. Good to see Pete, he's here in the bathroom, there.
Good morning.
How are you, Lori?
Good, working guys today.
Doing great. Yes. Good to be here. Alright, I got 9 o'clock, call and need your order of pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's see, we've just got a few things here for Scott to get here. We got a letter or a card from the Jackson County Ball Association, Holden Ball Association, your Jackson County Commissioners, thank you so much for your support and funds to buy a new store board on the newly renovated ball field for after the park. This will be used and enjoyed by many players, coaches, advanced for many years to come. Thanks again for all you do, Holden Ball Association, Justin Cluse, Board President. See that? What's that? We have a purchase order here for a pile of papers that just for the courthouse in general. Okay? From Quill, in the amount of $1,894.60 being paid for out of county supplies. I entertain a motion to approve the purchase order.
Second.
Then properly move to a second into a approved purchase order from Quill for the Jackson County Courthouse. Funds paid out of county supplies, any further discussion? Carried and done, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
I'll just take it all, that's fine.
Well, we looked and we weren't sure, so I was like, I don't know if this works.
Thank you. If I need something else, don't have to call you.
Okay. I already carried a guy up for you.
Alright, I think that's all the busiest business we had. Alright, Scott?
How are you doing?
What you got, how you doing?
Dust control sample we got, we found a lab in the rap, it's down in Texas, so we got that on Friday.
Okay.
It was $450. So, we're good with that. Beer run, we met with the city Holden over here about the power poles and things, and got all that worked out. The thing, what we need to do down there, get that moved in, for the vacation this week, so we'll probably be a week or so before we get in there and get that portion of done. We also, something we did talk a lot about is the trees down on the south side along that fence. You know, the properties there, they would like to work with us, I don't know if you have a problem with that. They will top trees out, out of the power lines, and they will come in and take out whatever else we need to pick out. I did talk to the landowners also, and the lady that's up the lane to the east, cut the fence across the pond dam. She would like to keep the fence as best as she can with fuel. And so, that belongs to the other portions, it's our own, so we got to keep the fence. So, they put a padlock and they're not building a fence there anyways. Right speed is Johnny, I got calls in and then about doing some of that stuff up there. They haven't gotten to contact me back, so we'll probably get them again this week. Something we need to consider probably on the budgeting is getting that like set up for asphalt. You know, if we have these blowouts on the roads, if we have to, we've been averaging for the past three years about $30,000 a year on just asphalt, so I think we need to, want to do a...
Separate line item?
Separate line item.
You talked about that last week, so...
Yeah. Also, the chickens seal on the patching, if we want to set a line item up for that, or just add to the budget. We're running around $60,000 or better on just patching.
I think you need to set up a line item for that too, does that include labor from LaborMax? Or is that just materials?
That would include LaborMax.
Okay.
So, if we do it that way, or instead of LaborMax separate, um, I don't know, lots of time.
Let's think on that, because do we use LaborMax for other things also, other than just patching? Or is that it?
That's it, on our side.
Do you still personally think it should be broke out as personnel, or?
I think I'd really have to break it out into LaborMax, so we can track what we're spending there.
I think that would be a good idea, yeah.
I agree.
That way it's not under, we're not lumping it all in. So, I think breaking it out would be the better way to do it, so we'll make two line items to do that. I know we're adding more line items, we took some out, but this is, this is a pertinent thing, not...
Okay, on the Mac side of it, we were out ditching on Q Road last week. We had Spark Two, so we were plugging down there, so we're washing and dishing there. 114 and D6, we did some ditching there to work rock with all, some mud spots up at J4, K, and then on 246 also. We made a couple of calls over the weekend to go out and fix some washouts from the rain and everything, so. I think that was the general, we were calling again. That's kind of what we're gonna do for the next couple of days, is fix some muddles and washouts. Then the shop there, Bryce has had to steal in, he's putting steel in those gutter dumps that we talked about. They're trying to stop the boat for a few more years. And they did five oil changes last week, so that's kind of good use of the brown lines. That's all we got. Oh, one thing I wanted to ask, is State Farm, that guy that took out that guardrail down there? I sent him an estimate, do we ever get a check from them?
He does, 134, up the bridge. I don't know if we get it off.
I sent that into my 48 for $1,675.75. And we had another one, this one guy that stopped in the sheriff's department, brought me a ticket, and the quarter up here was asked for damage, it's our gate, it's an Estenrol map, which is around 500 something people are on. And then we had another one here, just the S.A., that's an Estenrol quarter, around $600, that was Dairy Land Insurance Company.
These are court orders or something?
The one, they were looking for Estenrol restitution.
Okay, but they haven't ordered it yet.
No, I haven't heard, nothing a few months ago. The one here, where these guys took out the guardrail, insurance contacted me, and we went through that, and we got them across. That, that I don't think is important.
Just, I got some things here, so as far as, have you gotten with Aaron, as far as the drug testing?
I talked to Jennifer a little bit last week, and she said that, as far as she understands, is the CDL portion of it, for clearing house and all that stuff, she was telling me that you can't do that. So, it's for the non-CDL, we could run through it.
I should double check on that, because from what we were understood, from what we were told by him, he was able to do anything. So, I would, I would talk to him and, you know, sit down face to face and talk to him and see, because if he needs memorandum understanding for anything, we're gonna have to get it for the, for the non-CDL also. But, I'd sit down face to face with him and make sure, if you have contact with him yet. So, if he can get that done this week, I would appreciate it. How is the GPS coming?
Not well.
Okay.
Not well, I've been trying to get a whole map for Spark Two phone calls here recently, and it was voicemail, and it's been busy. The kits that they sent in, the cables too short to put on the gap graders. There's a, for the semi trucks, the plug that come in, we have, they said just unplug one thing and plug another in, that's not true. We got to hold it, grill, and tighten their plug on, and so far, right, so when we was tightening this nut down, it's all plastic, it strips the nut out, so basically, we gotta put in on one semi truck right now, and try to get a hold of it, and get some answers.
So, he has, if he's not attorney, calls at all?
He's not.
Then I think we need Todd to call, because this has been the long journey, they know for what, two months? We've had the equipment.
Close to it.
And we paid for it, like they asked us to do, because they wanted it done right now, so we did it. I would, I would recommend Todd, you send a letter to them, tell them that they can't get their in-year, that, you know, we'll be taking action, because this is not, this is not good. So, I mean, what do you guys think? I don't, if we're sitting here with nothing, we sat here for a few months, we paying for it, equipment sitting on the desk. And we can't get them to answer back to our...
This is Sam's here.
Yeah. So...
Did you send an email? Or a letter?
Rather do a letter, but it's some semi email, so, but also, we can just say, I'll look at the decree, and I don't know if I got a fine version of that. I know I looked at every one, but I usually have the ten signed versions. So, do you remember, you just like check a box online, and then somebody did the signature?
Signature online, I think that's what it was.
Okay, yeah, somebody look up to see what the front of the contract was, that was sand, that way I can just refer to it.
But I think we need to take action on that right now, because, you know, we're sitting here holding the bag and not getting anything out of it. So, we need to definitely set up, and if we don't have Sam's here set up, and we're not using the STAR program like it was supposed to here in face. So, we need that, and I think we need to get things rolling here, because it's been too long.
Yeah, that's good, that's, we're pretty sure that's...
Do you know who this higher up is?
I do not.
Another phone number to call?
I've had a few other emails from other people, like I know Alex is their commissioner, that was working on something. I've had a few other emails from other people, like, uh, I know Alex, their engineer that was working on-
Or the hook in that, uh, San Diego. You might try just calling their corporate office and say, I can't get ahold of this guy. And if, if we don't get a phone call today to try to get this straightened out, or we're gonna have to get our attorney involved. That may be quicker than sending a letter than even just let Scott-
Try that, if that doesn't work, then let Todd know.
Yeah, you could just, you do that, you know, break down probably everything that isn't needed in, right? You got a cable that's not long enough, it's just not functioning at all, or, you know, specific thing's wrong, or whatever you got. I couldn't, I'll kind of make it a, the, the back and forth of this thing gets kind of weird because, you know, you say stuff that's wrong and then you come back there and say, oh, well, we grabbed at these five things.
Right.
And, and you have to, yeah, you do.
Well, it is, and I was told that the wrong mounts are for the cameras. Is that true too?
I have not read anything about that.
You might ask Bryson on that because that's, you know, well, period is the camera, the camera mounts are wrong or the graders. So.
Graders plus the cameras in the middle.
They were supposed to have forward facing cameras, not rear facing cameras, but that's what we had talked about, it's called facing-
Not the graders, no. The cats, the cats you can't put in, it doesn't have the soft burn case and it's just gonna be in the dump.
Was it just the dump trucks? I thought they were gonna be in the graders also.
We originally talked about graders and dump trucks, but later after, they didn't purchase them and they come back and those are the cats. Uh, you cannot put the cameras in, out there.
Hmm, okay.
Is that a line item we paid for or something, or?
No.
Okay.
And, uh, good reason for uniforms. Some understand there's one gentleman out there in the shop that is not fitting his jeans.
Right, we're, we're on that too. The jeans were, we've had mental troubles and, uh, since September, we've worked the, and kept them back and, uh, changed for pants three different times and, uh, it was, today we've talked about that again. And we're, we're making one replacement, so we're in a free of contract with, uh-
If they're not fulfilling the contract like we're supposed to?
They're not.
Then, uh, do we have an out with them or do you have somebody else lined up we can go to?
We're already checking, uh, there's a small company over here in Asheson that, uh, some people here maybe use, uh, or they use big, kind of make a follow check with them and, uh, so when they, uh, give, we're all choosing.
Cause we got, we got rid of Sensos, I imagine we got rid of one of you first.
Right.
And I know we're just a little fish in a big pond when it comes to the bigger picture on those guys, but, you know, it's, it's still, we're still paying money.
That makes a suggestion.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'd just purchase them the jeans they want, we'll purchase them, they want them themselves. And a lot of them are worn by abortion machine that were out there.
Yeah, we talked about those things too. Uh, a lot of folks don't want that in their washing machines, I would, you know.
Do they have to be large or is there something about line resistance something?
If, if they're, if they're flamed, it's, it's jeans.
They're just, they-
They're not, they're not art flash certified or anything like that.
We shouldn't have that far attire.
The jeans really, the jeans-
You're kidding.
No.
Why, why are they art flash?
Because they're, because of the welding and cutting, for, 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 for.
That-
So, they're art flash certified for the jeans?
Yes.
Why?
Okay.
What they said they need?
Who says they need them?
Bryson.
I, I, I would highly disagree with that. I think that if you showed me something from OSHA that said-
Right.
That you need art flash for welding, for cutting, because, here again, I'm, I'm going off past experience. As far as I know, when I left, the only people who needed art flash certified clothing were electricians, H V A C. Uh-
Lightning.
Yeah.
Um.
Not, not welders, I don't think you're a welder out here that had art flash certified clothing.
No, I'm welding for your, my, my-
Yes, H M E does not require it. And they're, those guys wore their own clothes every day. So, yeah, we're paying for that. Those are really expensive.
Yeah.
I mean, they're over a hundred dollars a pair.
Will they be charged for that much?
Well, they're, we're not getting charged very much for them because they're using them over and over and over again. But I, they're just regular jeans are more than sufficient.
Correct.
Yeah.
But Bryson has a problem with it. He can, if he can provide us with-
That's what I say, I want, I want to see some-
Something that says welders are required to wear flame retardant.
You don't have any time to set my jeans on fire down at B and B.
Oh, I, I guess, I'm saying, shirts, shirts too.
Okay. I, that's all I've got except I was gonna mention too, the, uh, over there on S Road between two fifty-four and two forty-six. It's Voishin' Rock and it's, it's starting Voishin' Rock across the road. So, we're going to have problems there when it finally puts Voishin' Rock and starts Voishin' Rock.
If that's right, between two forty-six and two fifty-four?
Yep. I mentioned here a couple of weeks ago, this cut down secondary ditch, that secondary ditch is about foot deep now and it's Voishin' Rock across the road. So, we're gonna have trouble. And there might be a tube there that needs cleaning too, I don't know, it's right down there to bottom of crest, so. That's all I've got. Anybody else? All right, perfect. Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Oh, I take it back, give one more thing, we're gonna start, you're gonna have to, we're gonna have to cut back on spending on that. Cause the road bridge is in total is a fifty-five percent.
On what? On what?
We're gonna have to, we'll cut back on rock, but I mean, like, uh, we're gonna have to start, unless you absolutely positively need something, we're gonna have to start cutting back on that because we're getting, we're getting tight on that already, so, on the whole budget.
On the whole budget, thank you, I guess.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
I know.
We're on the desk, Mary, we found online three hundred and fifty bucks. Uh, we'll stick it out and we'll pick it up, so is that okay on that?
One, you have one second?
The desk to replace, to replace with Mary. Mary has a small desk like this.
Yeah.
And we found one that's kind of a cubicle style. Uh, there's, there's three sides to it, it's a lot older and we've been having for a few months now.
Did you check, do you have any extras around here or anything?
I don't know if there's anything here that will-
I think, I think they're rechecked.
Okay, that's what I wondered, sometimes they have them sitting around somewhere.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, yeah. But, but like I say, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have tighter mills or watching it because it's just, and I know prices are going up and everything, but everything getting tight, so we're gonna have to keep, keep an eye on it.
We've got all our, uh, semi drivers running them over.
Yeah.
So, we're building over there.
Yep. Met one the other day, he did a good job.
Uh-huh.
I said, met one the other day, he did a good job.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah. Yep, we're good, we're good.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you. Should run through the minutes real quick before we get those out of the way. Are we done in minutes?
No.
Nope. Okay.
Just checking a couple.
Sure. Good, good. Any corrections to the minutes? Uh, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June second, twenty twenty-five? Been properly moved, seconded to approve the minutes of June second, twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried, minutes approved. We're a little ahead of schedule, but we might as well keep going. So, we have a, uh, communication here from Decap Inc., uh, Community Action Partnership. And I'll just go ahead and read it, if that's okay?
No, okay.
Pardon?
I agree, difficult.
Oh, okay, I was just gonna say, that way it's for the record. Dear Commissioners, on behalf of Decap Inc., I am writing to request your consideration of fiscal year twenty twenty-six funding for assistance in the administration of HUD Housing Choice voucher, H C V program. Decap Inc. is, is designated as the administrating agency for the purpose of accomplishing this goal of the program on behalf of Brown County Housing Authority. The Brown County Housing Authority is formed through the co-operative agreements between Asheson, Brown, Donaldson, Jackson, Jefferson, Neemah, and Marshall Counties. All counties in the Brown County Housing Authority are served by the H C V program. Decap Inc. administers this program without local government assistance. However, due to potential federal funding cuts, we are requesting each county support in the amount of five thousand dollars. Your consideration is greatly appreciated. If you have any questions, please contact me, Jay Collier, at decapinc.org. Sincerely, Jeanette Collier, Executive Director. They have discussed this, uh, at the board meetings, the last board meeting specifically. And, uh, with the cuts that are coming from the federal government, as you say, it needs to follow, federal emphasis needs to fall back to states and local and everything else. This is where this is coming from. Uh, they have, from my understanding, of course, I'm, you board member up there, from my understanding, they have administered this program for Jackson County for, uh, Christie, help me out, cause Jeanette wasn't even sure, it's been a long time.
It's been a long time since we've had it.
Yes, it's a, we, we, it's basically a pass through hands off program, they take care of everything up there and do everything. Uh, they were using federal funds to do this, now federal funds are drying up, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna question that.
Sure.
Because it says, however due to potential, keyword potential.
Right.
Hasn't happened.
Right.
So, I would, I, I'd be glad to revisit this if that happens and they can show us that that did actually happen.
So, do you want to cable the-
Yes.
I mean, we're, so we're trying to build budget, so do you want to cable this? Uh, that's, that's key right here, we're trying to build budget right now with everything, so.
Have they been given formal?
They are coming in.
I say, is that part of this?
Is Jeanette coming in? Okay.
Okay, I'll ask the question. They, if they have something that has been sent to them by the federal government that says, we are-
Yep.
Cutting your budget by X number of dollars, I'd be glad to look that. But to say, potentially.
Yeah, no, I, I totally understand it. I totally understand it.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't deal with potentially have fuel fires.
Right.
Yeah, so.
And for each county to give them five thousand dollars on the bet that their funding is not gonna come through. If they get something, I, I'll be glad to revisit it, but.
Let's talk to her about that. I didn't know that she was coming in, but she told me she was gonna send a letter, so, perfect. We'll talk to her in ten, ten thirty, ten fifteen.
Um, see, may I, if you want?
Yeah.
I went to their meeting.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask you about that.
Yeah, basically, they've, they've applied for a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. And they already have the matching funds for the grant. And they want additional money from us. I said I would bring it back to you guys, it's to build sidewalks or walking paths of community storm shelter. I've never... It seems like a lot of money to build a community storm shelter. So, Hoyt built one with volunteer funds. It's a bathroom that is completely concrete. And it's a storm shelter. I've never heard of communities having community storm shelters where they can get 50, 60 people in. I'm not saying it's not a thing, but you're talking almost a million dollars for this project.
When do they know, when their grant application is accepted? That was kind of the holdup last time we discussed this, was kind of the same thing, the potential of them not getting the grant, and we give them the money and it's all sitting there waiting for, in their hands forever, always when we could be using it for other things, so... That's a kicker right there.
Yeah. Estimated completion time is summer of '26.
Isn't that Kate, there's a lot of Kedda grants running around for this, those trails and sidewalks and...
I guess, here's what I said to them. I said, "You've already got enough matching funds, you've got that in hand." I said, "We have places like the city of Dillia that has a failing water system, now has a tank, their vertical tank is leaking at the bottom." I said, "Those are kind of emergency situations where if we were to give some money to help facilitate some, that's where it would go." But it would be hard to justify using the alcohol parks and rec funds. I think to other cities, you know, and I explained that we did, you know, the entire, we paid $25,000 several years ago for the roof over there. I said, "They don't have a ball dived either." So, for years, they haven't gotten the bucks. And I just kind of laughed at that. I just, I'm not sure that's the best place we could use it. Having some of this fund, I mean, at some point, I've talked with Melody over at Dillia several times about their situation, it's not good.
They're good, well, Todd had mentioned, though, there are grants out here right now, and I think those are for Kedda also, for the bill program or whichever, I don't remember which.
And they're working on that.
Okay, they're working on that, so they're applying for them.
Yeah, they kind of got a one-two punch. Their lines are failing, and they've known that, and they've been working on different grants. Then all of a sudden, tank at the bottom split out and drained. And so, I've given them some suggestions. One of the suggestions was, because there's not very many customers on that, that maybe Pop4 would just take them over and rebuild the infrastructure. And then, I think you could go in and create a benefit district where those folks for several years would pay a higher minimum, maybe a higher water cost than Pop4, but they would fund the entire bill. It's easier, I think, for water districts to get some of those monies, loans, low-interest loans.
Yeah, low, yeah. The number of, is this Dillia you're talking about?
Dillia.
Okay, okay, switch gears there. How many people in Dillia?
Maybe 60 on the, that are actually attached to the water district of the city water.
Okay, well, that...
Give or take, that's Melody tells.
I was just thinking you're allowed, because KDT revolving money fund, who knows, it's still the case, but they have 100% unforgiveness on a loan for systems under 150, who are trying to...
I may get that information from you.
And they're always trying to talk about regionalization, to try to get the small systems, basically, out of hand. But yeah, I mean, that's...
I mean, there was another water district that did a similar type thing in Shawnee County, where there were multiples, 2025 wells went dry, were back. And so, a water district went in, built the infrastructure, provided the, all the stuff, and then they pay a higher on that for a period of time.
Sure.
I may get that information from you and reach out to Melody and try to facilitate. I guess, at the end of this is, if maybe there's some matching funds that we would be able to help them with, that seems like a better place to save our dollar and help in a situation like that than there is walking trails and a community storm shelter. Most people have storm shelters, or they...
Yeah, I tend to agree with that.
Thoughts, I mean?
No, I agree 100% on that, I think that, I don't think that that would be a very big use of public funds for just that one specific project.
It's a big project. And they don't have, they might guarantee that...
To get the $650,000 grant.
Yeah.
Like I said, I would want to hear more about that after they got it, and then we can get them to buy it, but for $10,000, it's kind of a, what they were asking for was $10,000?
Yeah. And what concerns me is that they're willing to use up all their reserves to do a project like that. That would concern me. Me, you know?
Yeah.
So, early money made proposition too, that's a problem.
I mean, if they were gonna be using this, their, all their reserves to build infrastructure and their down, like additional streets for future housing, those types of things, different story.
Yeah, no, I agree. All right, so we're gonna, we're sort of table at?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Todd, you got anything? I'm saying we're running a little early, but...
Well, I don't know if they all were somewhat tied in with Kate, so I don't know if she was gonna be here.
I'll see if she can get down here now.
Yeah.
We have 45 minutes before Jeanette gets here.
Me again, you wanna come down now?
All right, thanks, I win.
I don't know, I'd like to, I don't know if we can do anything, it should be concerning, especially with...
Bernie, speaking of the grant, I was saying?
Yeah.
I'm misreading right now, for Kevin.
Get you that, come on, come on.
Hi, Katie? We're running early, so you know?
Yeah, she's good.
Look at that, for sakes.
That's mine, this is mine stack. So, yeah. They went out on Friday and took measurements and pictures and all that, of that structure. There were also other pictures already sent, and they all have chances.
You sent via email?
Yeah, there's a...
Oh, I was just looking, I didn't read the, the little pics, I was reading them.
It's up to Commissioners, not to individuals?
And then I started looking into...
Yeah. I mean, summarize, summarize what I saw was essentially, the structure itself is interesting, because it's not like a more than building up, you know, it's conics, shipping containers that are the base.
It looks like it's a steel structure with a roof and then the shipping containers.
But they are, but they're containers, just sort of ship containers, that are also put on trucks for, you know, put them on rail, with trucks. And then they, I forgot what they called it, but there's basically trestes with some place, some other use that then, trestes to those two, is this two or three? Two or four, kind of thing.
Containers?
Yeah, it's just two containers, isn't it?
Uh, no.
No, not that I see. From what I see, there's more than two, more than four.
All right, but essentially, those are the walls for most part, except maybe the bags. And then it's just trestes on top of the containers.
Okay.
So you, Kate, you were out there, is that right?
Justin went out to take pictures, measurements.
I guess, how are the containers tied to the ground? I mean, are they, is there some base or anything, or is this...
Yeah, there's this whole, that... That's, that's all concrete, and it's sitting on concrete. So, it looks like, to me, because I talked with Division of Water Resources and two people there, and the one who looked at it and said, "Well, it's over this max square feet, so it'll have to be dry floodproof."
If stayed below the...
If it's below the face of level elevation.
It's whatever it wants.
As it is, it would have to be dry floodproof.
Okay, well, explain that to me, good. Oh, are you gonna tell me?
So, a professional engineer or an architect would have to certify that it has been dry floodproof, which means there's no water penetration into that structure.
Okay, which would be very difficult.
Which...
With the two bit of openings.
Would be, I mean, they would have to do a number of gates or something, flood kind of gate structures.
Okay, if it stayed where it was without being...
Right.
Fill-built up, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So, those are the requirements for the dry floodproofing. And, like I said, a professional engineer or architect would have to certify after that dry floodproofing is completed. And it would probably be a, they would probably want to consult with said engineer or architect on how to make that happen, if it even is doable for that structure, so...
I don't see how it could be doable for the structure, number one, because the side walls are, you know, just ten, the side walls are open, so if it floods, water's gonna run up underneath those ribs and into the building, so...
So, the dry floodproofing would have to be, it would have to be dry floodproof, a foot above base flood elevation, so essentially to be that long a structure. Is what I've heard.
Good luck with that. Right now, I don't see a way that that could be done, but... Okay.
Well, he's provided a lot of information about the use, too.
Which is?
I mean, I want to try to separate out what was obviously, you know, a charm campaign of, you know, family use, and he apparently says it just itself is from it, and they will use it to create furniture for his bar, which is in St. Mary's. And, you know...
But does not agriculture purpose, correct?
Well, you know, he also had butcher, it looks like butcher cabinet in there.
And beekeeping stuff.
Beekeeping stuff, so it's a broad range, it's kind of like a home sitting operation, if you're gonna...
So, I forwarded that, I guess, email to you.
Yeah, I think it was like that.
I don't think that I did.
He says he's cleaned off all, a bunch of the equipment, because it was there for an auction. Is that right? Am I remembering right?
Yes.
The roof was reclaimed chicken house crusts.
And probably, like, a major expense to bring it up to a foot above this flood elevation is all that concrete that was there.
And so, at this point, where is Stacy?
Essentially, it's up to us at this point.
Based on their finding?
Right. Because with theirs, Division of Water Resource, it's a fill to get it up to a foot above its flood elevation.
Okay.
And if it's not, then how does the county want to do it?
Yeah, because they're gonna say, essentially, you know, the only way you can build on it is move it up that foot, and if you don't, they're like, I don't know, there's a mechanism that they engage...
Well, there is eventually, so... The issue is the NFIP, the program that Jackson County has entered into with FEMA.
Okay.
To get flood insurance, those people that are in the floodplain and only get flood insurance, they have that option, right? Because we're participating in the NFIP. So, if there are a number of violations in our floodplain, then we are subject to an audit and potentially be suspended from that program.
Sure.
Which means those people that have flood insurance can no longer get flood insurance.
Yep, so this one project is putting multiple people at risk of losing their flood insurance.
Yes, anybody that goes into the floodplain after a certain date. We were audited last in '89 or somewhere in there.
It's a good year.
So, I, I've got a question on your, on the email that you sent.
Just goes out of the, the state likely isn't gonna do anything, second, just because they don't have, they don't have a real target.
That keep it on record and that.
That they said do this and something.
So.
Well, that ties into what I've been asked, because it says in this email, he talked to the state, named lady, and says that, she said, as far as they were concerned, I don't need a fill base permit, or fill permit based on what I've done. I'm trying to figure that out, because that doesn't quite make sense. Why would the state say that?
Imagine if, if she might have said something, if you said, are you gonna raise it up two feet or whatever? And you said, no, that's all they care about, because they don't care about the structure or floodproofing even, I think.
So, this is the hearing from this person saying, this person said this. So, on a daily basis, we get phone calls on general questions about certain things. And you generally answer those questions if they're not willing to give you any more information.
Correct.
Right? So you generally state, so, I think part of that conversation was, um, and this is throwing another opinion or in on this, but that, that call was made, and if I build this building and it has a bathroom in it, what does that mean? Then it was a discussion about the septic or the lagoon would have to be burned up to, above that base flood elevation and all of that discussion. It was, I think, a general discussion, and no more was discussed about the lagoon. And then there was the, if I'm not putting that in, then that doesn't apply, kind of discussion. So, those general discussions weren't actually solidified with, this is what I'm doing, what do I need to do? They were general discussions over the phone about things.
Good.
Um, because there was a discussion, too, with me a couple of years, a year ago, maybe, about a garage being put in on the property across the road. And that discussion was, well, you need to get an elevation certificate, and these are the steps you need to do. Well, nothing was done with that. Um, the building permit wasn't issued, because there was no base flood elevation, and it wasn't that done. So no building permit across the road was ever done.
So, can I, you know, at, at this point, until we have a, what you're talking about, that base flood elevation permit, the structure can't exist.
Can, right, I mean, as long as it's dry floodproofed, that's the problem.
If it's, if it's dry floodproofed.
That's what I say, from, from what I'm looking at in the pictures.
But, but in order to get it dry floodproofed, they're gonna have to do whatever they do, and then that's when they'll get the permit.
Get it certified.
Certified afterwards.
Right.
So this after the fact is that.
At the end of the day, we still have to have that permit.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, until we have that permit, the structure.
Well, I'm trying to divide it up, because I'm getting by, and I think this is right, is that if you're talking about what the state does, the state's not gonna do.
I'm not asking them to do anything, what I'm saying is, we require, because it's in a floodplain, a permit from the state of Kansas. If we don't have that, then the building can't exist. So there, the ball is in their court, the owners of this property, to either floodproof it or elevate it. And then once that's done, they get a permit, and it comes back to Kate. We charge them for the, not having the building permit, they get a building permit, then the structure can exist. Is that correct?
Yeah. It says, it's probably not gonna be able to raise it, and, but, I mean, it's probably a choice then, because how much it costs to disassemble it and reassemble it.
I don't, two feet of higher or flood, flood proofing, it's possible.
Those aren't, but.
Those are our questions.
Correct.
Yeah.
They're not our concern. So here's what we require to get this, and if we don't have this, we can't give this, and if we can't get this, that can't be. I mean, that's, to me, it's pretty straightforward. So, does it need to be a letter from Todd, from your office?
Well, how would you like that procedure to happen?
I mean, I don't mind doing it, it's, it's a matter of.
I think it should come from you and just simply state what I do state, I mean, right? You can't, that, that building can't exist as it is right now, correct? Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, because otherwise, we're, we're in danger of losing, losing the NFIP program.
Yeah, and if that's not their concern, you just need to state the facts that it can't exist unless we have a permit from the state saying that it can, it can exist in the floodplain.
As it stands.
As it stands. And so, you give them thirty days to respond, or two weeks to respond, whatever.
Right floodproofing plan, or whatever.
That, we don't even need that, that goes to the state, correct, to get the permit?
No, that would be.
No, that would be one of our requirements as well, is that there's a certification on the dry floodproofing that has been done. So, uh, there are a number of things that I can send him. The one thing I'll send him are the requirements for dry floodproofing from FEMA.
And it's, it's required that a civil engineer.
Or a professional architect.
Okay.
Certify that it's done correctly.
So we need to make sure he understands that, because that's, so.
You can't throw this queen up around the edge of it, or what can I do? It's gotta be done.
Yep.
The other thing that I will send, um, to him is our, because he sent me the building permit application, but we're not even at that point yet. The floodplain development permit application is, you know, I attached it in there. Um, it's, it's better than the one that we, the old form that we had, because this actually goes over, like, what is required for this permit, so. So he sent me that as well. Do you want to look that over really fast? This I, I got off of the Division of Water Resource website and modified it to make it ours. So there is, um, additional wording in here in this paragraph that.
Okay, yeah. Just that you emailed me that, you have an R E?
I gave you one.
Is it copied me? Okay, so it's under there. There you go, alright. Who needs?
So I will let you read that and see if that's sufficient. Um, the only thing that I have in mind that said was in that first paragraph there, on the front page. So I will send him that and the letter.
Well, the questions that I have are related to that, and you guys issued to me. Um, you first asked if there's right, if there's a right of county zoning officers or other officers entering property to look behind violations. I did not see anything where it was done at the end of the code, but that right exists, so. But for example, if you wanted to see whether it is done, the Environmental Sanitary Code has that. Uh, one dash three point three has access and right of entry. So, I mean, this is, it's just a, shows you how you do it, you know? You have to have a bridge to give us, then the right of entry to.
So then, do we need to put that in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, at least, I didn't see any, I thought maybe it would be state law, it's kind of generally saying, hey, you can do that, but it isn't there. I didn't see any of the codes that says you have the right of entry to investigate something. I mean, we could also talk about it a little more broadly, because, uh, I, you know, I don't know that there's any right to enter permissions in this, if you guys have any reason to, you know, investigate for, you know.
Trash piles, illegal dumping.
Illegal sewer. Yeah.
All of the above.
Well, we got, I mean, they might be able to view on the Environmental Sanctuary, but sewer.
Yeah, if, if we need that to be added, let's go ahead and get the garbage written up, and we'll get it, add it in.
Yep.
And where are we gonna put that in?
Um, you know, I'll think about that, right, where I'm standing right now, I think it's kind of like a general. I mean, it's not very specific to zoning code, it's like in the zoning code.
It's gonna be a resolution?
Yeah, it's not, it's not like a zoning change, it's just, it's gonna say something to the effect of, you know, it's important you're able to investigate zoning compliance and building compliance and all that, and X, Y, Z, and R.
So on that floodplain, there was the application there. So, the old application had that sentence in there. Uh, second from last, community official has not inspected the work. So, that would be a good place to maybe put the resolution, and that's, so the second from last sentence. That was on the old floodplain permit application, that sentence. So, that would be a good place to reference that resolution number would, whenever that happens.
Yeah, and that's specific to the floodplain, but not a general zoning right. Yeah. Well, mission's understood, we're gonna, you guys are going to do that. There might be provision in two for a, a method to get what I call administrative, uh, search warrant. That's a way that if you do have, like, somebody who's absolutely using entry, just, you know, by, whatever. I see, see you around here in the future, that kind of thing. You have, you need protection or whatever, that we have a way to go with this, or, you know, administrative search, which is a lot of, so.
Okay, yeah, I, I just, I'm actually, I think we need that put in there, get it done, that way we get the salt in the teeth, we win, and, uh, do what we need to do.
Uh, the other question, we just talked about this, because I didn't see anything on it either, is that building permit fees, it's going to be doubled, is that somewhere in there?
Yeah.
I could find.
Yeah, this is.
It's in there.
So this is how it currently reads, and the instructions, building permit instructions, that's what I read. So then the fee schedules are attached.
So the, is it, is this as it is, or is it, is it major grads, or important, or is it, are these additions?
This?
Yeah.
Is as it is. These right here are the separate fee schedules that will have the resolution on.
Yeah, and I, I think, and my thought was, is there any, there's nothing in the zoning code properly, so, says that.
No, just about that a fee, fee schedules will be adopted.
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, that's, if this is as clear as it is in these applications, that is troubling me much. I mean, I think you guys got very general enforcement ability to, to not have to put fines scheduled per se in that, in the zoning, but it's, so. It's just, I guess, it's the, still the division, but this is a zoning compliance, right? And there's no building permit building permit, except.
No.
Okay.
I mean, that is our building permit.
Yeah, and that, that's just a part of this, because I think in other areas, you could have both.
If you had.
Yeah, you have building code and, and a zoning code, so, just so those aren't confused. Because you guys don't have a building. It's fine. I mean, I think this is.
So on this one, it had, um, just a statement down here that agricultural use of buildings are exempt from permit fees. They still require a permit, and you all were talking about, if we're finding these, then you're gonna use the standard schedule and double it.
Yes, that's what we talked about.
So then, that little penalty down here will be posted.
Yep. I'm, I'm good.
Is that wording okay?
I read through it, I don't see a problem with it. Will it, or legal, I don't give.
Yeah, I think it's good, no, it's fine with it.
So then the other, other fee schedule, that's for, um, the planning commission and the appeals board fees and all the other miscellaneous fees. What I noticed on there is that we didn't have anything for the floodplain permit fee. And so, during this whole thing, I talked to Shawnee County and got their application, and they haven't updated their application for the new FEMA requirements and all that. So, she sent me her old one. And their seventy-five dollar fee over there's. And so, looking at it, our sign permit fee is a hundred and twenty-five dollars, which there are a lot more requirements and a lot more review on a floodplain. So.
Like me.
Yeah.
Yep. I don't agree with that.
So then I don't know if resolutions would be done for.
No, you just, I mean, if you put it on the minutes that the permission was, would be, changes to permits and fee schedule and purposes anymore. If you do, not push.
I think it's a general consensus, board would go ahead and, and approve the fee schedule as well, with the addition of the floodplain fee in there at a hundred and forty-five dollars, correct, Kate? Hundred and forty-five?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
I don't, I don't know if we need a motion on that, just general consensus. Okay?
Okay, cool.
So those will have new revision dates on, I don't think I corrected that on your sheet, so.
Uh, no, I think so, so it's revised July seventeen twenty twenty.
That's the last time we get the, these schedules. Alright, so I will send the letter and all the appropriate applications.
One, one other thing, you might, back to the, this floodplain issue, is get something from writing, in writing, from the state, saying that this facility in its current condition is not wanting to be used.
I have that email.
You have that, okay.
Um, she said, considering the size of it, uh, it will, and where it's located in the floodplain, then it would have to be dry floodproofed.
Yeah, because based on this, the end of the email to the guy, I mean, he acts like, well, the state says they don't have to do anything.
That's, that's where I was.
I don't want there to be a misconception.
Yeah, I would print off that email. You all want to see it? I can forward it to you?
Yeah, you can keep forward it, that's why, I mean, I, I, I just want to make sure that. Yeah, you can keep forward. That's why, I mean, I, I, I just want to make sure that you might need product that they understand that just because some lady in space and I don't even worry about that. No, we do need to worry about that. Uh, there's things that, with that building standing, that we're in danger of losing federally that we can't take. So.
Compliance, compliance with state is not compliant with standards.
Yep.
For both, we play.
Okay. So we were discussing sending letters to the buildings that we mind that are not receivable. So the Eagleview flyover, which is a plane and not a drone,
Yep.
um, did, um, they found eight hundred and twenty-eight new structures in the change binder from December of twenty-one to December of twenty-four.
About how? Eight hundred and?
Eight hundred and twenty-eight. Um, some of those are going to be false positives.
You've done physical checking before.
Yes. Um, some of them are false positives because they're like semi-trailers or, or campers or something that have moved around and they, they catch that as a building. Because they're large enough that it'll capture those.
Yeah.
Um, that would be about two percent, two to five percent of those would be false positives. Um, about a hundred building permits each year are, are actual building permits, um, about a hundred per year. So we'll take approximately three hundred off of that. So we're looking at over five hundred new structures, take two percent off of that. That's, that's how many.
Two percent, you've got a lot of those.
False positives.
Yeah.
I mean, they're pretty good about not capturing those semi-trailer and things like that. Um.
Yeah, I think, if they show two percent, I think that's cash money for players.
I, uh, was planning on doing a query in, if you guys can pull me up. I don't have really solid numbers. Uh, Justin will work on it this week and maybe I'll have some good numbers for you next week. But we're looking at multiple hundreds of structures.
These have never been put on, never been crazed accordingly with those building on there?
No, building permit, so they're.
You know, that's a tribute to you guys coming out there and looking.
So it's every three years, so.
Yeah.
I mean, unless we're doing, like, the seventeen percent, we have a sixth of the county that we're, we're doing that here. So we'll utilize Google Earth Pro, um, the, the farm flyover, the, the Eagleview. So we'll utilize all of those tools. Because sometimes Google has newer image than our flyover with Eagleview. So we utilize that in seventeen percent. But there are a couple of years there that we can be missing a building. And before Eagleview, we didn't have that until we were there every six years and we found new structures, so.
So any, is it, does it separate out trust land or the reservation?
I mean, we can utilize a search tool to, to eliminate that. This is just a numeral county caption.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about that issue because we're going to have zoning authority over.
Anything inside the eleven four.
I mean, we, it would, but, and if it changed the valuation, it wouldn't matter either, would it?
But over, over the reservation, we still have to value those exempt properties regardless of zoning.
Well, you guys, but you don't sense.
Okay, take zoning aside, look at the appraisal part of it. We, we still have to.
You guys don't, do you get taxes from those properties?
Well, if there was a trust, no.
Okay.
But if they're private.
But we still, I still have to appraise them to the best of my ability. And that's utilizing aerial imagery because we can't go on the properties and.
Well, yeah, in understanding that to be the case, I mean, what's the end, I mean, the end of the story is, is that we're, we're reappraising properties trying to value it, but we also crack it out and we need to get permits. Because that's where the distinction, problem for me is. If we have to value, if that's part and parcel of it, it's just we've got to avoid those. But we still, we still say, well, zoning wise, you've got to get permits. We can't do that on trusts.
We can't do that on, on.
We still value it.
Yeah, still value it and not say.
Building we're not.
Yeah.
No building.
We can't do that on anything inside the, inside the values.
Right, so everything on the reservation will be taken out of that eight hundred and twenty.
Not, not, not a building permit.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, yeah, that is.
Yeah.
I'm saying this.
That's where, that's where I'm at, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
In cities.
In cities, yep.
Preservation in cities will be taken out of that. They are in account here. Um, Fulton, for instance, last year, I think it was thirty-seven building permits that they, they gave to us to.
Block.
Okay.
And that's pretty standard.
Okay.
So I will have better numbers for you next week. Um, and then you can tell me how you want me.
Can you, just out of curiosity, can you reach out to trouble some planning and see if they'll?
Yes, I have.
And, uh, that work out there?
Um, I'm still waiting.
And how long will that be?
Uh, we start asking for building permits in September.
Oh, previous year.
And continue to ask.
So it's been nine months, eight months.
Yeah.
You got any response?
Oh, I talked to her.
And what's the response?
Um, that she'll get up to me as soon as she can.
Just wanted that noted for. I'll look at it.
Okay. All right. Can you, you'll speak?
Um. So designated county surveyor, did he have one? So.
Oh, to the appraiser's office, you mean, survey, you're, you're talking about surveying out property?
Yeah, the county surveyor that actually reviews the.
I thought that, that, I was told that we had one somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
Central Kansas or somewhere.
So. County DSO should have that.
They should review.
But the last one is resolution from two thousand and six.
They were appointing somebody or?
Um.
I know, we, we had that conversation right before, um.
Yeah, and then you had him, I, I don't know if it was him, but actually they might have a discussion with you guys.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so. Schmitz.
That, that kind of halfway sounds familiar because I know, like he said, I know we had this discussion because something came up about a county surveyor and I was like, ooh, so who is, what, you know, and now.
James Schmitz.
From where?
Parker, Kansas.
I think that's, I think that sounds right.
Does, does their office not have that on record?
They gave me a two thousand and six resolution. This is the last one that we have. I've tried to find something that's more recent.
But does, I mean, that individual, is he still paid his stipend and done doing the work? I mean, you shouldn't have to do a resolution every year, like.
There's a, there's a statute. County officers, county surveyor appointment. Order county commissioners of each county may appoint a land surveyor who's official title is county surveyor. County surveyor may appoint, yeah, it's county board.
Yeah.
I knew we had that conversation. She was still here.
They're supposed to be licensed. They pull a Parkland county, pull a contract employee in.
James Schmidt, Schmidt Surveying Services, Parker, Kansas. County Ser, Allen, Bourbon, Franklin, Jackson, Lynn, Montgomery, Wobunsen.
There you go.
That's, that's on the Kansas Society Land Surveyor website.
What's, is, is there reservation, I mean, that is not being done?
I, I'm just trying to figure out, like, who it is, like, when I get asked the question, who's reviewing these? It should be James Schmitz.
James D. Schmidt.
And the county pays him to do this?
I think that it came up because there was, uh, there was a, there was a payment to him or something and I, and we determined.
It was back when Patty was still there.
Yeah, and we determined that Houston County Surveyor.
James Schmidt?
My guess is James D. Schmidt.
Those guys in the park, they're these.
Well, it'd be only for things where it actually need a survey, right?
For subdivisions, uh, splits, all of these.
Well, but.
But he has to review all of them, correct?
Well, the owner, the owner would submit their surveyor's split, wouldn't he? I mean, why would, I don't know, but you guys have the duty to survey for somebody who wants to split it.
No, I think it's a review of those.
Yeah, we would send what the owner.
Those surveys.
To him, he would review it.
Okay, yeah.
And that is to make sure that one that split is in compliance with Jackson County resolution or.
Well, statute, statute first.
I know when this came up, this came up when we were talking about finding monuments. And we were, the, the, the county surveyor came up that he has to review all of that. That's when, that's when that came up, is finding monuments.
They had been, you were talking about Amroad out there.
Yeah, might have been.
Was that in twenty-three?
Could have been.
Yeah.
Or earlier.
Yeah.
I, I couldn't find anything. I, I know that he was here and I was down here for that discussion, but I don't know, I don't remember when that was.
I don't think he was there, I don't think he was up here. No. That was the, that was the gentleman that you knew that came in and discussed that.
Oh, Bill Haverford.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
That was him, but James, James Schmidt, I, I never met him, but that was when that came up with the county surveyor that I was questioning, so, so who do we have?
Can you just, I mean, reach out to him and?
Jim, James?
Yes.
Yeah, and just verify that he's still reviewing stuff?
Because if he's got.
I, I get sort of confused with what the question is.
As I'm reading through all these resolutions and all of these statutes and things, and I'm seeing, like, county engineer, county surveyor.
Yeah.
I would just like to know who those people are.
Do you want his phone number?
I got it.
Okay.
Um, and a county engineer.
And that, I don't, I don't think that's ever been brought up.
Yeah.
Um.
It's my knowledge, if we don't have a county engineer, if we have engineering that needs to be done for road and bridge, we reach out to a, a firm to do, whether it's water or whatever it may be. But we do not.
We do it by, I mean, you do it by contract.
Yes.
BG does a lot, um.
You haven't, you don't think you've appointed specifically anybody?
We, to, not my knowledge, we've never appointed a, a county engineer or a firm as our county engineer.
Yeah, that's probably another may, maybe.
I don't see a need to pay them a retainer if we need something.
No.
It's worth while, but you should reach out to them.
Yeah, I would say that's, if you're talking about that kind of, you know, water sewer roads.
They don't have water roads or.
Yeah, but BG is a good call.
Yeah.
And BG, some others if you need it, but.
So all we're talking to him is if he's still doing it.
Okay, perfect.
And he's not.
Then we'll go. You're, he's got us listed under the.
You said something about being inactive, Christine?
What means, you haven't.
Should have paid.
You haven't paid him anything, no.
So we probably just haven't sent him anything to review.
Um. So last week was accessory dwelling unit issues as well. So, um, we adopted accessory dwelling unit. And what we had put in there is that it's accessory to the main dwelling and that it can't have its own utilities. Um, the power companies, if they discover that, they make them get their own meter, which is why we saw that meter. Um, there is another one that, that they were approved to bring that accessory dwelling unit in under our requirements. And the power company had to lift, uh, some power lines and saw that they were bringing in this and, or requiring them to get a meter. And it was concerned because we don't allow separate utilities. So.
Uh, and so here's, I guess I got a question on that. So the accessory dwelling does not have its own address, right?
Correct.
So even if it's got a, a separate meter on the accessory dwell, accessory dwelling, it's still being billed to the main address, so technically it's not, it is not another, uh, utility, in my opinion.
As long as they don't require a separate address.
That's what I mean.
Well, the, the, isn't the purpose behind these rules is to make sure nobody creates a subdivision by in the black or whatever, that if you, if you can put it in a separate, address is going to separate utilities and it can, it's not mother law school anymore, it's.
It's own.
Right.
It's somebody else's.
But you can't put in a separate, uh, waste water, uh, water line from another water meter. You have to have all the.
Meaning, I, I don't know that we're terribly, you should be fairly worried about the utility saying they want a separate meter and address. If it still does, you know, that advances in one notch being able to separate it out, but the other ones don't, then.
The, the address would be the key there though, because if it's a separate address, then theoretically, yeah, I mean, I.
They can't get an address unless they go through.
Right.
Right.
Same there. Well, here's what I have seen in the past where there's living space in a building on the property and they call it B. We add us B. So there's an, an A and a B, um, created.
Perfect. We, not you guys.
We don't.
Okay.
Okay, I can, I can see that. Because that way, uh, and here again, I'm, I'm just kind of speaking from experience with, with DQ. We got two separate bills to the same address. But I think the city just, I think it's, they just went off serial number on the meter, if I remember correctly. There was no, uh, separate A and B or anything like that, it was just serial number on the meter, boom, there you go, you knew which one is which for the shed and for the building. I think, I think for that, that address designation there would be more for record keeping for the utility company just designating A is the main meter, B is the meter on the building, and so that they know which one, which one is which.
Okay, electric company purposes, I, I can see that, but there are those that have taken that and used that address as an address for many purposes, so.
That would be a violation.
Yeah, that would be a violation. I mean, that, that's pure.
Do they, do they deliver then? Does it, does it deliver to the address somehow?
Yeah.
Okay, so they can put.
Mailboxes and everything out.
Yeah, no, that, that would be a, that would be a technical violation right there, yeah.
It's like, we don't, we don't control mailboxes or.
We control addresses.
We control addresses, it's not mail or, or energy.
So the meters were not going to worry.
Do you mean, know if the meters are, are they branched off a different line or the, the line to the house, it's A, then they go.
No, it would have, it would have come off the main.
Okay, so they come off the main.
Yeah, it'd have to come off the main.
And I'm just going to figure out how, how you make average behave, you know?
Well, and, and like I said last meeting.
Need a bridge.
This wasn't ever.
Don't even go there.
Okay, listen.
Uh, what I, what I said last meeting though too is sometimes it is not, it is not physically possible to go from point A to point B. It's easier to go the line running right overhead, tap in, go down, you got your second meter. It's just, it's just an easier way to do it and, and cleaner way to do it.
I'm just, I'm just looking for the foothold here where we can say, well, you're, you know, if, if they can't, if, is the answer that the power company has, if somebody says, no, I gotta have it through this one meter, and they say, well, it sounds bad for you because we don't have any of that. What they, what the landowner does, right, does landowner just, at least I don't know how that conversation turns out. I'm just trying to figure out how we say to some-
I think, the landowner is, if you have main structure that had a power company into that, and I'm gonna build a garage separate from this, and I want power over to it. I'm not sure why they're reaching out to energy, you just run your underground or your overhead to it and put two hundred amp service in, could be one.
So they have their requirements, if it's a dwelling of any kind, they're gonna require a separate meter.
A dwelling of any kind?
It's an accessory house.
Yeah, this, this is dwelling, they need, so just for lack of a shot, that would-
So how are they?
Well, I, well, I asked that question, I said, how do you find those that, that would not be in any more compliance?
Right.
Um, they said, well, if they go out and they notice it, just kinda like we do. If we're not told and we're out there and we notice it, then it's an issue, right? Um, they went out to lift the power line to get that accessory dwelling and, and it's a, it's a little house that's being-
How many houses being moved in on?
Brought in, so it's obviously that it's a-
Yeah, I get it, I mean, it's, it's just like the water district, we don't, we're not gonna, the, the water districts aren't gonna serve two residences off one meter, because we have to build the infrastructure. I, I get it.
So, your question is what was that then?
What, tell me, I mean, how?
So, in the regulations, it says no separate utilities. So if I'm to, to enforce that, how, how do I enforce that?
Yeah.
And, and what other additional things am I gonna require?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm having trouble with, what I'm saying, my foothold, my leverage, because-
Or I think we're gonna have to do some research to figure this out, I don't have any answers today.
Yeah, let's, let's choose.
That was an issue that came up last week, and so, there you go.
All right.
Then, uh, one more, I guess. Um, this was last week as well. Um, it looks like also the whole, but that's, that's what I got, when I went out and searched. So, what I, what I do in this situation is I send them a letter saying that you were not approved for a landfill.
Yeah.
That we were discussing nuisances and all of that. This is one of those situations where I put part of our regulations on that, but-
So you know that it just happened or it's been?
Well, it looks like, it still looks like it's been plucked and pulled out.
The Aerial. That was in December.
About twenty-four?
It's about four, uh, ten, uh?
Twenty-eight, um-
Yeah, what was it?
Eighteen, three, two.
Um, yeah, that's the-
Eighteen, eight, fifty-one.
Garbage?
Was it a complaint by a neighbor?
Yeah.
Understandable.
It's like a building that was destroyed, is that, or is it laid on top of it?
I don't think it's a building, is it? Looks, looks like a trash pile.
Yes, it looked, I don't know, it looked to me like this, the foundation or like it was a log or-
Yeah, there was something there, but this is, no.
This is, uh, okay. So, I think it was in place.
That B was-
I'm glad it was, it's a, it's a tax sale?
No, this was a discussion about neighborhood revitalization. That B was on there.
Yeah.
That, that's not the, this violation, that's the- So.
Yeah, send the letter, go that way, see if we can get some take care of it.
Okay, that's all I have, if anything, B.
Nothing I can think of. We do, we'll give you a holdout, thanks, Katie. Thank you. Are you guys in the PK?
We are.
Sorry about the delay, come on up. We thought we'd slip her in, took a little longer.
No, she hasn't, look, I've got information.
Hello, I'm Kristy Mori, I'm the housing director for, um, the Brown County Housing Authority. Um, it services seven counties, Ashland, Brown, Madison, Jackson, Jefferson, New Han, Marshall. And this is Jason Gibson, and he's part of the NECAP administrative team that helps, um, run the-
Fiscal work.
Yep. Yeah, so, and today we are just coming to be able to request to be able to be part of the Jackson County Fiscal Year of twenty-six budgets. Um, the Housing Tristocracy Program, um, in, in nineteen eighty-nine, from what map and art history, it looks like those seven counties signed a cooperative agreement and gave the administrative role to NECAP to administer it, um, to be able to help, um, all the counties with housing, um, needs. So we administer the Housing Tristocracy Program so far for the last thirty-six years-ish, thirty, thirty, ever. Um, we've been able to, um, administrate throughout the class and things like that. There's a grant called a Community Services Block Grant that is used by our community action to be able to administer, um, as programs need assistance. Um, covers indirect costs and things like that. With the federal budget, right now, it looks like there may be, um, some funds cut from multiple different programs, and so we're just looking for additional resources from the seven counties that we operate under to be able to see if we would be able to be part of your budget plan. And this is a, um, what word would you use? Um, has seemed to be on it, will be on, if, if there's no budget cut, or if we're okay, then we would not be utilizing it. It's, it's literally just looking for resources to be able to-
Potentially be put on appropriations.
Yes, yes, and at that time, if that was a situation that would happen, we would come back to you and, and discuss the, the, the information at that time.
I know from, from reading, it, it sounds to me like the block grant's gonna be cut, uh, and I talked to Jen, or Jeanette, and she is, she's kinda indeed the same thing, so, uh, so, I, in nutshell, what you're saying is you'd like to put on appropriations, if you don't need the five, then it's just gonna stay there and carry over and, or give it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So are they cutting these funds, or are they moving or shifting the responsibility to the state of Kansas for any of these?
For the Community Services Block Grant, it looks like it will be, it looks like cut right now.
Yeah, cut.
And then for, from, just from last week looking at federal budget, it is potentially looking like even the Housing Tristocracy Program would be potentially also moving to a state block grant. Um, but once again, it's just one of those things that you just sit and wait, but in order to be on the budgets for the county, we're just going ahead and re-planning, if that's a concern that the county still wants to. Um, and I think the best thing that I always like to say is, I've been doing this for twenty years in this job. Um, so I do have the, um, the knowledge and the skills to be able to still administer the program. If the federal level is still able to fund, um, the rental assistance side of it, um, then it would just be the supportive, um, part of the fiscal side that they were.
So would that be like weather invasion and things like that, or is that, that's separate?
Yep, they have their own program, we have, Star has our own, uh, funds.
So what would it be exactly that we could be saying?
Um, so if we were to lose the CSB funding, is that, mm-hmm, the Community Services Block Grant funding, then, uh, this program would not be able to pay, you wanna, just one of these indirects?
So it's more of the administrative money, if there's not enough to cover the administration of the grants, not the housing assistance portion of it, it's just more of the administration to actually run the grant. So, just to be clear, so also, this wouldn't go towards like raises for staff or something like that? It's just the administration, uh, to run the grant, like, uh, because of not getting enough money from the grant to run the program, so. Um, that, we're always looking at ways to cut the costs, so like, we're not just, uh, you know, like, oh, it's federal money, we're just gonna throw it out there and throw it away. So we're constantly looking at ways to keep the costs low as we can, so.
Yeah, it, it, it's gonna be a struggle, I'll just be frank with you, it's gonna be a struggle for us to come up with, I mean, to five thousand dollars, because, I mean, the state of Kansas with them, they don't require, but they encourage us to be, uh, revenue neutrals, and that means if you're gonna have any new, I mean, it's, just to give you an example, if we were revenue neutral, we don't have to have a special meeting, we don't have to send out a flyer, we spend between eight and ten thousand dollars just in, uh, money and costs. So in order to increase our budget by five thousand dollars, we'd cost this between eight and ten. I mean, that, it, it's, and with us having to, I mean, last year we cut a road and bridge budget, um, I don't know, and, and if you take into account our shrinking, our shrinking, uh, tax revenue from down here, because of all the land that's being taken off the, the tax roll on an annual basis, I mean, we've lost thirty-three thousand acres over the last twenty-five years, never to get another dime out of that. So, it's a struggle for us, um, to increase the budget. Uh, the only way to do that is to raise somebody's property taxes. And last year was a-
Lynch bomb.
Yeah, we, we gave our employees a four percent raise, and that's all we increased our budget by, was that four percent, and it filled that room. So, I know that's not what you wanna hear, but I don't, I don't know, um.
I think we'll take it under advisement and see what we do.
Yeah.
Is there, is there any firm deadline that you've heard as far as for when the CBDG will?
We, I think we're just waiting on seven and two.
See if the bill passes, yeah, if I can watch it work on it, yeah.
Okay, when, when's that gonna be? I mean, have we?
I, I have-
He's never said it's taking it up yet.
I was gonna say, I laugh because it's literally in years past, I mean, you know, it's sometimes-
Kick, kick it down the road.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, I know.
Like, we wait to see what actually happens.
You're just kinda-
Yeah, that's why we're coming in now, is, is kinda seeing what resources are, and that, we understand, uh, um, um, budgets staying neutral, cause, I mean, it's a really hot topic and, and, uh, county evaluation to raise the taxes, and all of that.
And I think last week, we went to Brown County, and I think just in, just the last week, the buzz already that we've been receiving has, um, been really positive, so, um, in my conversations that I've had with locals at, you know, volleyball games and the softball games and things like that, the, the conversations I've had, um, is very promising that there are other people out there, donations and things like that, that we could also try to, um, be looking at as well. So I think that there are other, uh, like we said, resources, but we are wanting to, um, go to each county and just make sure that, number one, you're being notified, A, that you have a housing authority in your county, um, just because nineteen eighty-nine has been a while. So, um, so I think that's, and then also, just kinda learning, uh, what the counties look for and what they're wanting, um, so that we can also be looking at those funding opportunities as well. Because as a housing brand, we do have the access to be able to tap into other grants as well, so.
Okay, great. Well, I think that we'll take this under advisement and see what we can do, but, uh, you know, like, like, uh, Mr. Kelly said, it's gonna be kind of a squeeze to be able to even do anything extra this year.
So guess, if we could advise, Kristy could put it at the bottom of the list with a big question mark?
It's-
And then we start to work our budget, you know, hopefully, you know, we can, we can take a look at it.
Yeah, if you have any questions, it's always there.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Rockman, like some of the college that's in the district.
Did, uh, Ruth, uh, Callen told us?
Dennis?
Yeah, Mark, I saw that.
Yeah.
I think she didn't say.
Yeah, she fell and broke her gut.
Uh, yeah, she fell back, she was in British Park, I believe.
He's still up?
Which one?
Ned?
Um, what are you guys doing with AMs?
Have we heard anything more from them? I mean, the contract's up, right? He, he said it's got an auto renewal.
It's not an auto renewal, it's gonna be a three percent renewal, which is gonna be up around fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I've been reading the contract, I appreciate Tara sending it, uh, there are some questions in there that I've, that I'm gonna have, I mean-
Oh, budget wise, I, budget wise, I've only had to put in the whole amount that we would do without three percent increase, just so I guess.
So once again, in order to give them a three percent increase, we're going to have to decrease somewhere to be revenue neutral.
Yeah, well, that's, I don't think that's gonna happen anyway. To be quite honest with you, I don't, I don't think that's ever gonna happen.
Well, I mean-
I mean, I know, but, yeah, we, that's why we, uh, as soon as we start working- Yeah, we, that's why we, as soon as we start working on budget, it's going to be better, but.
So are we going to create some work sessions where we?
Going to have to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Soon as we get those on the calendars, then.
I'm ready whenever you are.
Well, let's see about what we can do then.
Preferably. Because of the season we're in.
And are we in a season?
Yeah. It'd be early morning, like, I can be here by five AM.
I might be five, I could be here, I'm usually here by six.
I could do whatever, it makes no difference to me.
Don't shoot for Wednesday or um, just a, I've got just a very broad overview started, see if I can.
This Wednesday?
In the morning?
I would prefer, yeah.
I mean, who can do Thursday or Friday?
Let the dew get off the grass, I mean, yeah.
I can mow with new lawn.
But, but Wednesday, is it supposed to rain like Thursday again?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's supposed to be dry, yet.
Maybe let's see what Friday.
Let's see what Friday does, because I got granddaughter, the babysitter on Thursdays.
Yeah, it looks like there's going to be rain down.
I can, I can do, I can do any morning this week and this, now next, next week, the sixteenth, I will not be here.
So Friday, AM?
Yeah, I mean, I can do Friday, AM. Wednesday, AM, and next week, any day it looks like, other than, other than at Monday.
Or what if we just?
What if we just do Friday?
That works, you want to go for Friday?
Friday.
Okay.
Eight o'clock.
You want to go eight o'clock or you want to go seven? You want to go earlier?
I think I'll go seven, I don't care.
What are you going to do? I mean, would that make it easier on you?
Oh, but eight's fine.
Okay. All right.
I know you've got to be here, you've got to get in here, get your office role, and then walk the length of that, so.
All right, perfect.
So then, maybe after that, if we need to, just continuing on Monday.
All right.
There's nothing else on the agenda.
Well, but with hay, and I'm going to be doing hay too, it's going to kind of cut, yeah, so earlier in the morning would be better.
Just play it right here.
Well, we can just kind of do a rain and go over here, and then I'll give me a weekend or Monday or whatever to get my changes in.
Okay.
Okay.
Your original question with the ambulance or?
Yeah, so that's what we're talking about.
So, I mean, at this point, you know, I have some questions, I, I don't know that we get any, one of the questions, where is the second ambulance station? I'm getting no report on an annual basis of where that is, and I don't believe it's any, any of the fire departments, so where is that? I mean, it's not their discretion, but where?
I only see one of those, you know, driving back to the office on Gage.
Well, now, they do have a.
That's good, they have an, they have an office at sixty Gage.
Yeah, they do, I think that's their transport.
Department.
Headquarters, well, they got their some, I mean, there's a, looks like an ambulance vehicle.
Yeah, no, it's, they use ambulance, the actual ambulance for transport. So if Stormont Vale calls and says, I've got a transport to Children's Mercy, they're going to pick them up and take them. But we have not received anything back, did you send us stronger letter?
I didn't send a stronger letter yet, but that's, that's due for me, if you have to direct me.
I would, I would, Derek, you sent a stronger letter back, because like I said, I need, I need some answers as far as, I want to see if P and L can see what's going on.
I mean, is the word reach not, because that's good to use, I mean, because basically, a request for financial information with the contract department.
I don't see why it wouldn't be, I thought, I thought that that was in here.
And it's the end of the three years, really, so you think they'd come back?
When's the, I don't have that, maybe it's due.
I think it's the end of this.
I didn't have like this month, not like the year, right?
Yeah, it all made reviews for three percent, um, for another contract.
If those significant changes to service are required, both Jackson County EMS and the county desired to extend the contract, the following applies. All provisions of this contract apply unless otherwise modified, uh, after the end of the period, twelve thirty-one twenty-five, this agreement should automatically renew for each year for a one-year period in place. Unless either party notifies the other party ninety days prior to January first of the next calendar year, so.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, I want to get rolling on this.
So maybe you would put in your language that, that, um, if we don't get a response within thirty days. Then, or get the information within thirty days, we're going to send out a letter, a notice, applying to the termination of.
Yeah, well, who do we got in pen as replacement, who's going to develop? So we don't have that yet, sir.
Uh, I mean, so.
Okay, it says, it says right here, uh, and I don't mean to interrupt you, it says right here, Jackson County EMS will make available to the county all bookkeeping records and financial reports regarding the use of county funding of Jackson County EMS where requested. That's not sufficient. I, I mean, they can tell me all day long how they're going to spend the five hundred thousand dollars, that's fine, I want a P and L.
Well, that's not, yeah, I understand, heaven sent that.
I know.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm not, I'm not ragging on them or anything, but it's, it's, if I'm going to be fiscally responsible with county money, I need to make sure that we're not funded excessively. If they're making five hundred thousand dollars a prop each year, which I, you know, I'm just throwing that out, and we're paying them five hundred thousand dollars a week, but we need to kind of look and see what's going on with that. It's not, I'm not being fiscally responsible if I can't see what their P and L is compared to what we're putting into the fund.
Well, what I, I think what I'm getting at here is, I don't have a problem right now saying, look, you're in rage if you haven't done this, and then if they get that to us, then we're going to have to fly.
Yeah.
The question that I have is, is that if you say, let's game plan, I'll be down. They don't respond to me again. I mean, do you do a RFP for a new ambulance service?
I, I hate to.
Yeah, but.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, that's what I'm saying, I hate to, but, you know, if we're not going to get your response, uh, guys, I'm, I'm a little disappointed.
Well, that's what I, I just think, you know, if I say, I, I'm always at the beginning, if I'm saying, I'm going to sue, I'm going to sue you, or we're not going to renew a contract, that, that basically comes, and that's going to happen. And then what do you do when January, January one runs?
I was supposed to, I think too, I, I would just maybe say in the letter that we're willing to continue the contract at the current rate with no, no increase.
Yeah, at the current rate.
Yeah.
I mean, why are they ignoring it?
That's what, that's what I don't, I don't understand, I don't get, I'm not, I'm not real happy, but, you know.
I don't know what you're saying. All right. Good.
Uh, okay, so we got that. And.
So, what were you going to say, so are you going to have each individual budget request? That they, that they give, giving you?
Would you guys want copies of my just standing my book? Or you want me to make copies of it?
Okay, I have a copy, I mean, so it would show what they had and what they want, okay, and so then, were you also writing somewhere how much each department had left last year that they transferred into capital?
We, typically, we go through that, and so they have to justify to us what they have left over, what they're going to do with that, and then we monitor their capital outlay and say. Okay, so I'm going to use Pat as, as an example, emergency, she's always good about, no, I have enough, this is what we're covering, this is why, and the rest needs to go back to county, and she's done it, and it goes back to county generally.
But can we know how, I'd like to know how much each department had left to transfer in capital? So that as we look at it now, we see how much they have in capital outlay, and if they had that much left last year, they might have. You know, you kind of, you kind of pad your budget to a point, I mean.
Well, I, I can understand it to a point, especially if they're, say, your office is going to buy new computers last year, so you, you budget for that, for some years to build that up.
Right, and if their capital outlays are in good, good shape, then I'm just curious how much they had from the year before, you know, maybe, you know.
Derek sent me an email last week saying that she just talked to some of the associates of the registered beings, and they're telling her that it's a security issue to have payroll. So I had Aaron send a message off to IP Pathways. And Kenny doesn't see a issue because of all the power wall and security, but he's going to talk to Tony.
Have a payroll, having payroll on our?
My payroll program, when Tammy got her server for CIC. She let Kathy put CIC on that server.
She wants it all for herself?
Yes, is my understanding, I haven't got a top, chance to talk to her yet, but, um.
Yeah, have that conversation, but I think if it works well, there's a non-security issue.
Well, I talked to Tammy, and Tammy said, they told her that too, when she did it, she goes, the registered beings are always saying, oh, it's a security issue, we can't have them on there. That's the association telling her that, but if my IP pathways is telling me it's not.
Right.
I mean, I don't want to spend, I need to buy a server, and I don't have to.
Yeah.
Because they get public access portions in the registered deeds office?
No, I think it's because she wants to go to Fiddler, which is a completely different company, and I have CIC for payroll, so they would have access to that server. But I think if it's a security risk, I would be more concerned about my payroll records.
The registered deeds, yeah. Yeah.
So she doesn't have a.
Registered deed records, almost everything in there is public record.
Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, have the conversation with her, then we'll work with her.
So she kind of just points her finger.
Yes, no, I'm meaning, yes, and she just wants her own.
Which would force you to purchase a, a new server, or additional, additional storage on your current server, correct?
Correct, and if she's worried about security, then she probably ought to take her server down in her office.
Yep.
And how much would that cost you?
I have a request into Kenny to give me a call. I mean, we've never had any issue before, but if she's concerned, security is a problem, I think she just needs to take her outfit in her office, and she can run her payroll office in her own.
Well, this is not from the door.
That's right.
Well, that is bad.
Okay.
Okay, so, I, I, go ahead.
Well, I think at the end of the day, those, those decisions end up being the three of us.
Yes. I agree.
And so if we feel confident in the information that we get back and that it's secure, I think that will, that, I believe that decision will fall with the three of us.
Yeah. Uh, I just said that email that Christie forwarded to, what's her name, yeah? On, uh, six-four from David Huber, and you got it too. You got it on.
He's had one of them.
Yeah.
The, the server?
Yeah, what, what do we do with that? What is that? Anything?
I thought that she talked to somebody.
What? No, that's what, that's what.
She was still calling you and you.
That's what this is, I think, no, nobody's called, nobody's called me this.
I, I think they filed for extension because they need to interview you.
Okay, no, nobody, nobody called me this first.
I, I did email her back.
I think we're going to, I think we're going to go any deeper than where we are right now, we need to be in terms of.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, that's what I was, I'm going to ask for a.
If you want, I, I, I just, she said she's got to take care of some house office.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's good, so I'll, I'll give her a call, David, no, this is first I've heard.
Payroll change.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're good.
Uh, payroll change for Sheriff's Partner for Jessica Molden, resigned or retired. I guess I'm going to have to test him, buddy. Todd, you got anything else?
I don't, I don't think of, so.
Sounds good.
Per, per ways.
All right, appreciate it, Lou.
So this is how we got it separated, who would have happened, is that why she is separated?
Um, I think she was working at Price Partners a little bit, one of the bases, I think it's a forty-two, another seventy-one.
Oh, yeah, it was a forty-two, and that's a good to say.
So we accepted it in March, and, and, what was it? This isn't March here, ooh, March tenth. Well, the date on the invoice is five-sixth, but on March tenth, we, we approved this amount here. So what's the difference on that, twelve thirty-eight, twenty-nine twenty-two, nine six six six. Higher wire and labor, refurbished rims at sixty dollars per rim, so they charged us forty bucks more on vinegar. Replaced by hydraulic tank, okay, Todd.
See you, Todd.
See you later. Well, there's where it is for repairing inside frame, the repair rust damage, fourteen thousand five hundred dollars.
What do we got, what do we?
Read.
Read?
For the electrical bed, the barrel head.
Oh, yeah.
We approved a bid of four thousand two hundred and thirty-seven, forty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Because that's what it was, they, they bid it on three-ten, we accepted on three-twenty-four, we get the invoice on five-sixth, for fifty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Remember Scott said there were some, the hydraulics for cylinders were bad?
No, they, they replaced the hydraulic tank, but the fourteen thousand five hundred is to replace inside frame for repair rust damage.
Oh.
I would have thought for fourteen thousand dollars, they would have told and said something to you that, hey, it's going to cost fourteen-five more, and he would have come to us with that. I don't remember.
He did, I thought he did.
He was talking about hydraulic tank, but I don't remember him saying anything about the. Because that's, you know, that's a ton of change.
Does Kyle Scott, the tissue? Do they use their dirt cards to yell?
I'm going to put it on speaker.
Shane's going to have to turn that.
Hey, buddy, I got a question for you. Uh. Uh, we're going over bills here and on the Reed and Company thing for the dump bed.
Yes.
Uh, I remember you talking about replacing the hydraulic tank, but I don't remember anything about replacing the inside frame for rust repair.
Yes, we did.
That was like fourteen-five over what the original.
Yeah. Right.
Did, did we talk about that? I don't remember that.
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay.
Yes, we did.
Holy crap, all right. Well, if we, if we brought it up, then, or if you brought it up, then that's all I need to know.
We, we did, we talked about it.
All right, sounds good, buddy. Thank you.
You bet.
Bye-bye. I would have thought you would have been able to look that originally and see that you would have to do some structural work on the bed or on the frame.
Yeah, I don't know if once they got it off, where the pins are hinged.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. They didn't, you know, if they went in there to replace the bed or repair the bed, I, I mean, I don't know what excuse is, but they just didn't look at the frame.
Yeah, I would have thought if you were to replace the bed, you would look at the frame first, you know? But that's just me.
Yeah. Kind of like the headlight.
Yeah.
Did you, uh, I had a long conversation with Bryson about that.
Yeah, he called me.
I wasn't happy.
About the headlight?
Yeah, so, so, so the whole deal was, the individual who drives the truck stopped by, um, Richard Chevrolet.
For a recall.
For a recall, but they noticed that one section of an LED's running light or daytime running light is out. So they said, we can replace that for you, but it's the whole he, headlight assembly. He came back and said something to, uh, uh, Bryson, and it was over thirteen hundred dollars because they had to replace the whole thing. And then on top of that, when he came in, they took it back down there and had them install.
Right.
And I said, what do I need you for? I said, I googled it while I was sitting here. I can find one less than four hundred dollars anyway. I said, what, what I need you to do is, is spend money like it was coming out of your pocket. Well, I wouldn't have replaced it. I said, then why do you authorize it? Because that, that vehicle can operate, it's not a safety issue without that. I, I just.
And, and did Bryson replace it? I mean.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's, it screws out, plug it in on the back. And then I go back to questioning, you know, his ability to determine some of those stuff. Because I said, we should be searching the internet for stuff like this, not what were junkyards, you know, not by brand new.
Right.
Well, how am I supposed to determine whether it's emergency or not? I got to tell you that. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that I just.
So, so did you ask, like, one where they didn't find any problems with the brakes or where really they would add into that?
The technician, the technician, when he came and looked at it, Bryson looked at it.
Okay.
And Bryson looked at it and, uh, checked it out as far as he could go, and from my conversation with Bryson, my conversation with Scott, the technician, when he came down and looked at it, said, you're right, something doesn't feel right on it, but I can't determine anything. So.
That what he told you? Said it's operated rare?
Oh, no, you're right. That was the switch, that was the switch.
It's operated rare.
And I think that they found that after, because he said it didn't feel right, and so after that, he said, oh, yeah, he did that switch up there on the phone, yeah. Yeah. So that's where training needs to come in and make sure that everybody understands how it works and what it works.
Or just having a conversation with a tech down there and, and running through these things. But to just immediately call for John Derrick him out and do a full inspection. Because it's, it's an air brake system. Just go back with here. No, this is a, uh, for sure.
Well, they had it laying on top.
Yeah. I was.
I mean, we weren't.
So is that, uh?
Just, I think she pulled it out to.
Oh.
Is that fifty-six, was that fifty-six nine forty-eight on that bed?
No, it shows forty-two thirty-seven. Oh, okay, fifty-six nine forty-eight.
Okay, so that's, that's already been encumbered as road machinery, that's what I want to see. All right. So that's a. Let's say again, I would, I would have thought that that would have been looked at.
And, and not only that, but it doesn't take much for Bryson to jump the truck, run down there and verify what he's on.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to evaluate, you know, okay, is this the best truck to have?
Yeah. Best truck to put it on. Well, let's say, I don't like getting those fourteen thousand dollar crashes like that.
He did, he did say something, though, that one meeting he talked about, he said that.
Okay, then that might have been, you know, calling one funeral or something, I don't, or what I went down to, I may have. To the. Because like I said, I, I remember the hydraulic tank, but I didn't remember the frame.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for your sign.
Earlier in the year, we had talked about, uh, remember, since last week I said something and then I caught something and then it kind of totally flowed away.
Yeah.
I remembered it when I left. Uh, we had talked about doing lunch with the commissioners again.
I thought about that.
Are we going to do that? I think we need, if we're going to do that, probably going to do it or not. What do you guys think?
Can we work that in this fall?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I enjoy doing it. I think it builds, uh, relationships with the departments and people. But I think I'd better.
No, no, I think, no, I mean, summer time is busy for us and, yeah.
Even if Road Bridge, they're in middle projects and doing stuff.
So I think we did, we do pizza lunch, we do.
Up there.
Yeah.
And then everybody else, we ordered sandwiches from across the way.
Right. So did you see where the school district is doing a, a budget thing?
Uh-huh, budget meeting.
Right.
Yep.
Where people can come in if they want to.
Oh, because last year we invited their superintendent.
I know, I know, and so now.
We only had one show up.
I know, so Holton has, Holton has, I just didn't know he did.
Yep, I saw that.
Almost, you know, what, like five o'clock some evening or maybe six o'clock some evening.
Are we still planning that?
I would like to. I'd like to give it one more chance. Uh, you know, I mean, that, that was one of the things we got raked over the coals last year, we need to, you know, we never gave it a chance to talk about, never gave it a chance to talk about. Well, we did and nobody came, so I'd like to try it one more time, see what happens.
Okay, we need to probably get that on the calendar.
Yeah, so we've got to get, kind of get budget together for it.
Right, okay, so give me the dates, Christie. We have to have. The, give me the date where we can't change the budget after that. That's in August.
Your first publication for your R and R is August fifteenth.
Okay, so sometime probably in July.
Yeah.
We would need to have towards the, the last third of the month, we would have to have that public meeting. That would give us a little bit of time, fifteen to twenty-five days to, to make any changes if we chose to. After August fifteenth.
I did find that at my rookie hearing, if you want to do your R and R or if you just like to exceed, you can do it by itself, and that still gives you time to work on your budget. If there's anywhere else we can cut, to come back, and then we just have to publish our budget here. R and R is what you have to have by August, unless it's September. August fifteenth and September fifteenth, I think is the last day.
You have a window that you can have it last.
And if you don't need that, then you directly go back to your R and R.
Okay.
All right, anything else to say?
I don't have anything.
Pleasure. Christie? All right, so there's no further business before, stand up and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Side, side.
In approximately a second, and we adjourn this meeting in further discussion. Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carried. What's that?
We're still on the AM.
Yes, we're on it.